It is four o'clock in the afternoon and I'm going to call our board meeting.
Thank you.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll read them. We'll give those up more.
From pre-k, Tatum Cook, from elementary, Jose Gomez, and Juliana Narros. From middle school, Anna Carpenter, and Violet Cortez, and from high school, Kayden Hughes, and Jay Geruna. All right, copies of that. Congratulations to them, and I wish they could be here, but we'll make sure they get their certificates.
Okay, on our department of the month, we still need to celebrate our department from last month, which is our residential department. We apologize. We had a little business to take care of this month, so as we congratulate our new director, Dr. Todd, and never gets old business. And in that regard, I want to take just a minute to say that Dr. Todd, at this time, is permanent director of the school. And that title will change on July 1st. She will become superintendent. And that is according to Senate, House Bill 11 and Senate Bill 10 that passed into law. So just wanted to make sure, I don't know if any of you all were here the day we made the announcement, but that's just a reinforcement of the announcement we did. Now, apparently, we have not been approving minutes in a long, long time. Close session, we'll wait for close session.
Seven people are free now.
All right. We have minutes from March 5th, open meeting minutes. Have all of you looked at your minutes and read them thoroughly? Good. Well, March 5th. Tell me what you all want to do. You want to do all of our open meeting minutes at one time and all of our closed minutes at one time? Have you read them enough that we don't have to go through those? Okay, open meeting, March 5th and March 24th. Although, I hear a motion that we approved those. Okay, second, Tammy, all in favor, just raise your hand. Thank you. We have closed session minutes for February 5th, March 5th, March 18th, and March 19th. Do I have a motion to approve those? Jimmy made a motion. Is there a second?
Okay, Jimmy made the motion. Jimmy seconded it.
Okay, all those in favor? And those minutes are approved by the board. Okay. Last meeting, we talked about the RFQ, which is the coordinator for our capital projects. And we talked about approving the funds to be requested to hire a capital projects coordinator. And since that time, we have been in meetings with DOA, and I think DPI may have been part of some of those discussions. And recommendations were made to us about how to hire that RFQ. And at this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Todd to go over that with you, and so that everybody understands what we're going to do with this position.
...last week, Raleigh, about our need for this RFQ capital project coordinator, and how that may or may not fit with the other schools, given the history of our building, given our geographical location, and some other factors. So while we have appreciated, guided, and we are open to the offers that may be presented, we're going to look at from an NCSD meeting, so with what we think might be best for us locally and for our students.
And another, just to add one thing to that, one of the things we talked about, Dr. Todd and I have discussed, our buildings are older buildings. And we probably are going to be looking at more capital projects in the future than the other two institutions. Eastern was built in the 60s, and so we have the expertise here. We would like to see this position here on our staff. So that's one of the recommendations we're making to that hire. Briefly, before we get into new business, last week, Dr. Todd, myself, Chris White, had the opportunity to go to Raleigh and meet with DOA, which is Department of Administration, where we will be moving, DIT, and with the North Carolina Collaboratory. And it was very productive. DOA had a very good attitude, and they are ready to get on board. We have insisted that for sure, nobody misses a paycheck in this transition, that everybody's going to get paid right through, like, we're not changing anything. But we will be fully transitioned, we hope, by August 1st. We will be fully transitioned to DOA. And DIT, in those discussions, gave the okay for our IT department to skip discussions of making requests through DOA and make requests straight to DIT. So that is good news for our guys. We have to use the middleman. And, Dr. Todd, you want to talk about the collaboratory and how we're moving forward on that?
We also met with Dr. Jenny Corn, in the Collaboratory. And essentially, that's an organization that has $1.5 million return budget from the legislature to do research, educational research that informs legislation. And it was a very positive interaction as well. Representative Blackwell was with us, and essentially, Dr. Corn was asked, she asked us to throw out ideas for research for our population. So I do think that it's going to be geared more towards teaching and learning rather than an assessment of our approach. And we have been invited to be interviewed by four Duke University students in their master's Republic Policy Program. And they are working on master's thesis, kind of a literature review about deaf education in North Carolina. And they are asking for out the definite information here back there.
So, to sum up the whole visit, it was very positive. We felt very good after. It didn't feel like anybody was actually just there to look over our shoulder, do any evaluations of the schools. It felt very, very positive. Right? And let me introduce our volunteer replacement tonight. Mr. Brian Shaw is from Chris's firm, and he's standing in for Chris tonight. He's on another superintendent interview. Do you have anything on that?
No, I'm just delighted to be here. I also represent the Eastern North Carolina School for the Deaf. And so Chris Campbell and I, and Dean Shadley, who represents Governor Moorehead School, all at Campbell Shadley. It's nice to have us all together at the same place. We try to collaborate and get good ideas, but also save money. If there's work that one of us can do, that can apply to all three schools. It's more effective and efficient to do it that way. So just glad to be here and glad to be of assistance.
We're glad to have you, and we always like when preheads are working on one problem.
Well, especially if one of them's mine, then you do want some others, I guarantee.
Okay, that takes us to new business. And, Dr. Todd, you ready for the director?
We have 64 students enrolled. We did have one of our high school students withdraw recently and go back to her home LEA. But we've added new preschool students and a new middle school. Additionally, we had four prospective student tours in March, one preschool, one kindergarten, and two second graders. And we have an additional preschool tour scheduled for April 8. It's track season. Some people do runs for fun. Let's see, so we have high school kids competing at local high schools for that. Our middle school group, one Destimation Imagination Taylor Group, and we're invited to the Global in Kansas City. We have literacy day coming up next Friday, April 11, which will include the Optimum Speech Contest. We have K.A. spelling bee on April 16. Senior trips coming up April 11, 15. We have a zoo trip, 30th. We have May Day and Founders Day in celebration of my first book plan. And I did mention, we are having departmental meetings with DOA, HR, physical, DIT, Office of Budget Management.
It's the end of the year.
Yes.
Okay, do any of you have any questions that Dr. Todd can report? We'll save for Wallace's benefit. Due to circumstances beyond their control, our team will not be able to go to Kansas City. So our fundraising efforts there will save for next year. So we have a policy that we need to do a first reading of, and it is the Internet Safety and Ethical Use Policy. I'm going to turn it over to Mickey at this time. She's going to explain it without reading it. And this policy's related to other policies. She's going to explain that too, but this one is a result of policies that we've already passed. That's what?
So we have to do this first reading for the Internet Safety Policy. As Sandy says, that is a result of two policies that we've already passed, but we need to, this also, we had passed the Technology Responsible Use. That was Policy 3225. And the Web Page Development Policy, that was in the 700, 7322. But both of these are a result of HR, HR Policy. So people will need to read through this Internet Safety Policy, 3226.
Tammy?
My question. Those three parts that mentioned, well, one of us, we talked about that on, but we need something about...
We have passed two policies in the 7000s. One is Technology Responsible Use, which has to do with the use of school computers, laptops, that kind of thing. The other one was Web Page Development. That was also in the 7000s. This, I don't know, there's nothing about bullying in any of these. These will come in the... Good question. Oh, this is Internet Safety. It has to do with students and their use of the Internet. And what we need to be conscious of, what they can see, what they can't see. And in this policy, the student must acknowledge that they got training. This one kind of goes along with the other two. As a matter of fact, 7320 mandates that this policy be passed. So that's where we are in this.
Amy, that's a good question. This is Internet Safety that we're discussing. And it's a resolved. And I see where you are coming from. And we are, we are going to do this. We need, I am, because yesterday, I distributed a proposal, policy that needs to be reviewed, student behavior. That can be, they're going to review that particular policy later. But a good idea is this too. I can see where that, that would have been a plan that would probably got that. But this, this Internet Safety is definitely a...
But the 4000, we'll actually address directly, fully. Yes?
I would just point out that on your Policy 3225, which is Technology Responsible Use, there is a paragraph on page one that states, "General Student and Employee Behavior Standards, Including Code of Student Conduct, Apply."
Yeah.
So there will be anti-bullying provisions that are incorporated, basically, as part of this. Not specifically listed here, but it will apply.
And on page one of 3225 is also the statement that all students must be trained about appropriate online behavior, as provided in Policy 3226, which is the policy we're talking about tonight.
Amy, yes, that's good.
Okay, so this will be our first reading of this policy, which means that we will bring it up again next month. You may can pass it on second reading. Just wanted everybody to have an opportunity to look through those. Candace?
I have another question for Kristen.
Did you, yes, in question, you know, teaching, kids, why is it... So in early school teachers, we all set up something next to you, class, that we presented in that class. Otherwise, MSIP, yes, that would be that is the topic that we want to address. Sure, because we have experienced our bullying issue. So that is something that can be addressed.
Okay. And in relation to that, Dr. Todd, that may be a good place for the school to be able to do this policy and get student signatures for that, too. Okay, the next thing we have is to approve update camera usage. And I have, we got a message from Mr. Aaron Denny, our IT director, who's over here, that this is to update our existing camera system, as well as adding door access control and camera in Underhill Gym. Give our camera servers and software up to date. And is that a company, Aaron? Have a gone? Okay.
This is Aaron. Avidigone is the brand system that we use. EMMSS is the company that manages.
Yeah. Is this, I'm going to ask a question. Is this related to the new Wi-Fi in any way?
No, this is a separate, our campus system. This is part of the security system, the cameras and the door taps. They're all buried into a system. It's updated, the software, all servers on campus, added Underhill into that system.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, so does everybody understand what this has, this deals more with our security? And you all got this proposal in your Google Drive? I hope you've all had a chance to see it, look at it. Okay, do I have a motion concerning this?
As soon as possible, in this 10 seconds.
Okay, and the total cost of that is $152,713. No sense. All in favor of that? Please raise your hand. Did you want to have a discussion on that, Wallace?
I just don't think this came up on the, or it didn't come up on the Finance Committee meeting that we had on March 20th. This is Wallace. And so I probably would just need to be reminded of whether this was something that was already contemplated in the budget or if this was something that was not contemplated in the budget.
That's right. Are you ready to make it?
Wallace, did you hear the...
This is Jimmy. Are we still on that discussion? I just want to comment that I think if we set up that security system for Underhill, the gymnasium, I think we'll also have a lot of interest from the alumni and visitors in that area. So it might be nice to see, you know, have that access there for them and have that security and then also students there. We have that all set up. I just think that would be great for future events that we host in.
And Wallace, Hannah was explaining that it's not in the budget per se, but we have an abundance of last salary that we need to spend before July. So it would come out of that pot, and it'd be a great thing for security for our hands.
Wallace, did you get all that? Can you hear, Wallace, can you hear me?
All right, I was on mute. I was able to hear the summary that Kristen provided. So yes, and that explanation made sense to me. Thank you.
On the screen. Wallace, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you guys not hear me?
Sort of.
Uh, the next thing we have is to approve update camera usage. And I have a, we got a message from Mr. Aaron Denny, our IT director who's over here. Uh, that this is to update our existing camera system as well as adding door access control and camera in under Hill Gym. We give our camera servers and software up to date. And is that a company, Aaron, Ababagon? Okay.
This is Aaron. Abigamon is the brand system that we use. E M S S is the company that manages.
Yeah.
Installs.
Is this, I'm going to ask a question. Is, is this related to the new wifi in any way?
No, this is a separate.
Our whole separate thing.
This is part of the security system that cameras and the door taps and all barrier into a system. It's updated the software, all servers on campus, adding underhill into that system.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Okay, so does everybody understand what this has, this deals more with our security? And you all got this proposal in your Google Drive. I hope you've all had a chance to see it, look at it. Okay. Um, do I have a motion concerning this?
Excuse me. Be in conclusion as soon as possible. And this is taking second.
Okay, and the total cost of that is one hundred and fifty two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Nonsense. All in favor of that, please raise your hand. Did you want to have a discussion on that, Wallace?
I just don't think this came up on the, or it didn't come up on the finance committee meeting that we had on March twentieth. This is Wallace. Um, and so I, I probably would just need to be reminded of whether this was something that was already contemplated in the budget or if this was something that was not contemplated in the budget.
Wallace, did you hear the?
This is Jimmy. Are we still on that discussion? Um, I just want to comment that I think if we set up that security system for Underhill, the gymnasium, um, I think we'll also have a lot of interest from the alumni and visitors in that area. So it might be nice to see, you know, have that access there for them and have that security and then also students there. We have that all set up. I just think that would be great for future events that we host in.
And Wallace, Hannah was explaining that, um, it's not in the, uh, budget per se, but we have an abundance of last salary that we need to spend before July. So it would come out of that, um, pot and it'd be a, a great thing for security for our campus.
Wallace, did you, did you get all that? Can you hear, Wallace, can you hear me?
All right, I was on mute. I was able to, um, hear the summary that Kristen provided, so. Yes, and that explanation made sense to me. Thank you.
On the screen. Wallace, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you guys not hear me?
Sort of.
Now.
Now. Anyway, did you hear Hannah's explanation? Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Let's go. Feel like I'm at Grand Canyon. Okay, all those in favor of okay, and the purchase of these cameras and everything, raise your hand. Okay. Our second, um, item to approve is to replace the flooring in main building. And we have, we got in our, um, packet, we had several places where this flooring is going to be replaced, but to me like about all of it.
Able to read over that.
So have all of you had a chance to look at that? Drew, is there anything you want to say about the flooring in main building?
This is not the entire main building. I don't want anybody to ruin the point, but we're trying to take care of the, the hallways, the lobbies and the TV rooms and the rooms in the back. And that would be second, fourth, third floor and fourth floor replaced with a luxury vinyl tile. And then an enhanced vinyl tile on the first floor. And I, I kind of hold many, many staff of that technical plan on my desk. Everybody came in and gave their opinions and went to people and talked. I hope nobody's just only there. But we need to be focused.
Okay. And Hannah, I take it this is part of lap salary also. Okay, any other questions from Hannah or Drew?
I know we're planning to replace the floor with a laminate or tile. Does that mean though that we're going to replace the carpet as well? And that's going to be replaced with the vinyl with that laminate? Is that the plan? Carpet, I, I don't know how long it's going to last in main building. Very hard to and traditionally we have learned the hard way through mopping the tile and cleaning it, if you remember. So I think for main building, if we could do all tile for it or perhaps I think that carpet, I think that that may be a little bit easier for us. And it's going to last a little bit longer. Well, the issue would be tile.
The vinyl would need to be, uh, in a design so that there's some kind of linear pattern. That's all. So that people who own vision, vision loss, they will know exactly where the calls were as opposed
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of, uh, new flooring? We need a motion. There's a second. Okay, uh, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All right, that passes. Okay, I'm, um, getting ready to turn things over to the committees. Before we start on business and finance, Wallace, um, I do want to tell you that while we were in Raleigh, there was a lot of discussion about extension budget items and appropriation budget items. And Chris has suggested that you call a meeting of budget and finance to make sure that we have a complete list to get to Representative Blackwell so that we are assured that we can get the funds that we're going to need to do the things we want to do next year. And I will get up with you, um, sometime soon. Uh, Hannah may already have that list. Have you got, have you gotten those lists, Hannah? They've been, they're already turned in. Okay, we just need to make sure we've got everything. There was some appropriation money that we wanted to make sure we got through the legislative budget, so. Okay. Okay, Wallace.
Hi, it's Wallace. Question for you on what you just said. Sandy, um, as far as the timing of that budget and finance committee meeting that it sounds like we should call. And the question I have is would the timing of the regularly scheduled budget and finance meeting work for that or do we need to call an ad hoc meeting sooner?
Ad hoc meeting. Just because. Just the, the governor's already. You get that? The governor has already released his budget.
The governor has not released budget yet.
Legislature will be in discussion.
The legislature will be in discussion concerning that.
That's happened. Name of Wallace starts talking. I need to mute that microphone and then unmute that board. So if we're going to ask him for a response, give me like five seconds to do that.
He's getting ready to talk, Wallace. Okay, Wallace.
I don't think I understood the answer to the question. Should I call an ad hoc meeting or can we wait until the regularly scheduled finance committee meeting?
Did you get that?
No, we'll take that offline. I can provide.
Ready for your report.
Okay, all right.
Pop meeting.
And can you hear me? Okay. Yes. All right. I think you can hear me. Um, I will be brief. First, um, we, uh, were successful in obtaining an employer ID number. And so the, uh, as of the date of the meeting, the creation of NCSD as an agency with its own budget codes was underway. Um, secondly, as noted in the commentary earlier about the meeting with the collaboratory, uh, the coordination between our staff and the DOA is proceeding generally, uh, in a constructive way. But as of the meeting day, we still didn't have a draft of a memo of understanding, which would outline roles and responsibilities. And that's something that we do need to have in place, obviously, before things go live. And so there was discussion of whether it might be helpful for either our board chair or for me to reach out to DOA to encourage that that, a draft be created. I don't know, have we received a draft yet? Yes or no? Okay. So maybe that's something we can follow up on. The third item I would just mention is we did discuss whether there had been any contracts completed under the delegated authority for an amount less than a hundred thousand dollars. There were not any that had been come, um, entered into, but there were three noted that have expirations coming up soon. Uh, or three possible needs. One was the OT occupational therapy and physical therapy contract, which expires June thirty, which, um, the team is evaluating the best way to move forward on. The second was our Rico printer and copier contract, um, which is nearing its end. So, um, the staff is obtaining multiple options on that. And then the third was, uh, the need to obtain a resource officer during summer camp. Those are the main items that I had to report. Happy to answer any questions.
Sure. Hi, Mr. Saunders. Uh, I was speaking with Chris Campbell.
Campbell.
Right. I was speaking the other day with Chris Campbell, uh, and he mentioned that the DOA attorney is working on an MOU. So it should be in process. I don't know what timeline we're having. And I will get back with you, Chris. See if he can check in, but at least it's in process.
That sounds good. That would be great if, 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 if you wouldn't mind checking with the attorneys to see if they can give us an estimated date when we can expect that.
I will get up.
Is that, is that everything for you, Wallace?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Okay, that's right, policies.
We've already, yes.
Dr. Todd, one thing for Wallace. To clarify, do we have a contract or, but we do have a contract, excuse me, we do have a contract with the SRO that we need to update. The changes would be the dates and the hourly rate. That contract does cover our summer campus, although just to clarify with you on that.
So, um, we have talked already about the internet safety, uh, policy which comes, which is, uh, number four, two, oh, five, at about four thousand series, and that's what we're getting ready to, to look at. Uh, those in the group. And there is a team's meeting scheduled for, um, the committees to hear an overview of those policies, things we made, uh, which ones we may be more specifically interested in, uh, that might need to be modified for NCSD. But that meeting, um, is on April the ninth, and we will begin to develop those policies and then bring to the board for approval.
Dr. Tate, hi. So I, uh, will I be at that meeting? That's Tuesday, correct? Just to clarify, that's the meeting that we have scheduled on Tuesday. Okay, great. I just wanted to double check while I'm here with you to make sure that that is the same meeting that I was originally claiming to be. Uh, Mickey said I'll see you there. Dr. Tate, great. Thank you.
And, uh, I might add at that time, this time, four thousand series deals with students, policies for our students. And one thing we want to make sure that we do include is anything that is directly identified with our residential program, which public schools do not have. So, uh, we are looking at that very carefully. Dr. Tate.
What do you think, Eddie? I have nothing. In the question. Um.
Good. And with that, marketing, Dr. Autry.
Well, me last Tuesday, really it wasn't our bad lockdown. That was probably less than thirty minutes. We were stuck in the room in the dark, but all right, so we went ahead with our meeting, uh, actually before that happened. So we hope that doesn't happen tonight for this meeting. Here we are, be stuck in this room. So anyway, uh, so we talked about the brochure and the website. We went into a lot of nail discussion about that, uh, and the process that we need to do. So, um, got two months left before the end of the school year and the students leave. So we're trying to, uh, take advantage of using our drone so that we can get drone video of the kids doing their activities. And, uh, that would be, uh, posted on the website. So that is in process. And Jason Tuck and Sam Moss working on that. Uh, and Teresa Moss, um, they're working on the visual, uh, board virtual. And then we will get that in progress and then we will use that and then transfer that over to the website. So the information is similar. And that way, uh, it's going to take time to do that, of course. But, um, we are hoping that we have everything ready by summer. And then that way we're in, we are good to go and we can distribute things in the fall. That's the goal. And, uh, we were stuck in lockdown and we still were discussing all these different issues and topics in the website and all that stuff. And the brochure, even though we were in lockdown in the dark.
Eddie, can you stand up? Jimmy, there's the man you can thank.
And Jimmy, and Jimmy's adding, yeah, so this is Jimmy. Honestly, it was fun. Last Tuesday, uh, even though it was April Fool's Day, yeah, yeah, yeah. And you say no meeting, Sandy said no meeting. Oh, really, April Fools. Yes, we did have a meeting. It was on April Fools.
If you don't realize it, the Board of Trustees bonded last week during superintendent's interviews. We were together.
He said we were together for hours and hours and hours on end.
Um, but anyway, um, I'm glad to see that all of that is pro- progress, progressing nicely. Um, Dr. Tate, do you want to say anything about the website as we get right here?
I, you said Dr. Tate, but I knew who you were talking to. You were looking at me. So we are discussing right now with DOA, um, what they're going to be able to provide for us with, with the, uh,
IT people.
With the IT people, understand the terminology.
Back end support.
In the back, okay, excuse me. You all know what I'm talking about when I say back end support. Okay, so please suspect that we've got a good opportunity to get some free fancy web support. So that's what we're hoping for. That would be wonderful.
That would be great. That would be great. Um, so thinking about that, um, Dr. Tate. Student, student behavioral health.
Student behavioral health, really. Behavioral health, really, you know, we're looking at, we're thinking about mental health. That's different from medical, physical health. Uh, so we had a meeting yesterday, uh, at two o'clock. And, uh, we're just still in the beginning stages of developing and identifying what we want to do as far as the school history, how to do our approach, how to approach mental health, emotional health. Uh, and how to have that emotional, the emotional language that we add. And, um, exposing students to healthy emotional development. And also we discussed in, uh, some of our future goals of what will for our students here on out and moving forward. So we'll have mental health, we're going to have a mental health screening, those kinds of things. We just brainstormed and talked about a lot of different things. Oh, also, I did distribute the policies. That was, that's related to the four thousands series, let's see, and five policies. I'm not going to go through all those here, but they're all related to student safety, mental health, safety, student care for the school and as well as the dorm. And also those five policies. We're talking about that they don't exist yet. They're not, DPI doesn't have any, really, public schools don't have them. So the reason is, we need them because of the dorm, sure. And specifically related to deafness. So we're going to review what's available, what's out there and try to pull other places that have them, put them together, and we will then write our own policies for our students and their safety and their mental health. So that's, that's my passion. That's my area, and I really appreciate the committee being there and supporting us. And I look forward to seeing those developed. And do you want to add more, or is that enough? Is that good enough?
Whatever you want.
I think for right now, just letting you all know, we're still in the infancy stages. We're just taking steps and progress. We'll develop those over time, and we'll be able to develop more of those policies, and we'll distribute them as we get them. But we need education, and we will continue that and continue on with this process. So really, our goal is to provide students with wraparound. So that's support that covers students, you know, not just school, right? It's not, it's not one area. It is going to be everything. It's whole, holistic, holistic.
This is Sandy. I will add that I was attending that meeting yesterday, and it was a very informative meeting. Especially of the gaps that we have here at NCSD. Residential Life Committee, we have been in the process of looking at a student and staff handbook. But until our policies are written and some changes that Dr. Todd is planning to make, we're going to put that on hold and just to the side for a while. And we meet again on April tenth. We'll start working on a curriculum that will coincide with the academic curriculum and implement some new programs that Dr. Todd has decided to use, which I'm very excited about. This one, curriculum.
Academic Curriculum Committee, we meet again on April the eleventh. And during that meeting, we'll be discussing ASL curriculum that we like to use. We've got things being embedded now for more academic areas, but of course, the ASL curriculum is something very important. Let Dr. Todd say anything more about that if she wants to. Just going to be like comparing the different curriculums for ASL, and we're very excited about being able to have that. But we will get to work on that next Friday, July eleventh.
Okay. Dr. Warner. There in the north.
Yeah, this is Tane.
This is outreach.
Really, I don't have that much to report. But Orlando Mayo, she's been trying to contact schools that have deaf mentoring programs, early intervention programs. And so we, we will have a meeting with the Tennessee Schools for Deaf tomorrow, and I'll be joining that meeting. So I feel like that the committee, the full committee, you know, needs to meet soon. And so on a monthly basis, we really haven't started our monthly meetings yet, but I realize that it probably would be best for Dr. Todd to be involved in that because that's a big program, and that's a big initiative. So we'll make sure that we start the right way. We do outreach with that program and then being in touch, being in touch with Dr. Todd, I'll be, I will be in touch with you about that. And then also, Gallaudet University just updated its website. And they've got early intervention resource list, so that's a great opportunity. And plus, Sandy, you just mentioned that the North Carolina Collaboratory. Those resources, that would be another resource that the committee needs to decide what direction that we need to go. Are we looking at Gallaudet, or North Carolina, whatever, you know, what are we, what are we looking at? There are a lot of possibilities out there. So the committee really needs to be able to decide because we've got to have that meeting soon. And I will work with Dr. Todd and make that happen.
Thank you. And I will say at this point, from being at the Marketing Committee meeting, that we're beginning to distinguish now the differences between marketing, what we're going to do in that avenue, and outreach, what we want to do in that avenue. And so those things are beginning to fall into place, and we're seeing that work very well. I will take this opportunity, before we get to old business, to say that it has been a pleasure during these past couple of months to work with Dr. Todd and all of the things that she has brought to the table to each of these committees. It has been very, very nice. Okay, old business. Our communication equality policy, Dr. Todd. Dr. Todd, Dr. Tate. His T's get all wound up in some of her.
Go ahead. Go ahead. And just hold on one second, please, before we continue for the interpreters.
This is, this is for Tane. Okay, we'll call it up.
This is Candace. I don't mind to give the floor to Dr. Todd at all. But I'm willing to, I'm willing to play that role now. So to clarify, which month is the?
January twenty-five.
I'm going to double check when that vote was. So as you are all aware, we did vote on our communication policy. That was January of this year, correct? And that communication policy outlined the requirements and expectations for our school here, the North Carolina School for the Deaf for Staff. And we set up expectations for signing fluency and required specific levels that were required for specific jobs. So all in all, you know, a simple concept, but we wanted to make sure that the staff were aware that they were required to follow those signing fluency requirements. We spent several months, really basically a year, developing that communication policy. And we wanted to make sure that we had our hearts invested in it. It's a very important policy. And we wanted it to reflect NCSD's values and goals and our long-term, our long-term goals as well and be a reflection of what we value, our core values, and what we want to see for our students moving forward. Additionally, that policy was brought up by the Communication Committee. And the Communication Committee fully supports, you know, all members of communication, what that looks like. So we wanted our policy to reflect that, and we proposed that policy to the Board of Trustees. They were all in one hundred percent agreement and support and voted to pass that unanimously. So they had, everyone had full support of that policy when it came to vote for it. When any type of policy is adopted, we understand that it may not always be a perfect fit, that there may be some growing pains, some adjustments that have to be made as we continue to make a policy fit and work for our needs. I always think of it as a policy and a law that's being passed are similar, right? And there's no such thing as fast changes. If you try to change a policy to fit every single need that pops up, it's not really feasible. Want to make sure that we have a standing policy that can last. So we will be listening, of course, to your feedback. We're open to that. We want to make sure you guys know that we hear the staff there. As we receive feedback, though, it cannot be immediately incorporated into the policy. But of course, we're going to take that feedback. We're going to listen. We're going to discuss, and then we will continue to provide education, training, and additional resources as needed. So my recommendation, that I, the recommendations that I receive from the committee, that we receive from staff, we know that there may be some additional changes that need to be made, and if that occurs, then we can address that with the Board of Trustees. But I think we definitely need time to consider that feedback. And this process is ongoing, so we just want to be respectful of where we are now with this policy. And I don't know, I lost my train of thought where I was going with that. I was going right along with my speech, and I'm like, oh, what was I going to say? Oh, okay, it's back. I remembered. Thank you. If there are any components of that policy or any policies in general that you feel, okay, you know, that could be adjusted a little bit, appraising the wording, or we need to add, or take something out, please know that we're listening to that. We're open to that. Please feel free to join the committees. That way you can really make sure your voice is heard. Now, use your voice to make sure that you're able to impact the school how you feel like it should be. We value your feedback, and if you have any concerns related to any policy, I just really encourage you to get involved, right? You know, we know that you're passionate. We know where your heart is. So again, we want your feedback, but we also invite you to join the committee and really, NCSD and the committee is here. Our goal is to support the school and support the students. And, you know, we're all by all, all for all. There's no exception. So I don't want you to think that we're thinking we're in charge of everything and we're making all the decisions. This is an interactive procedure. These policies are designed with you guys in mind, so we want to make sure you feel comfortable getting involved and having your voice heard, and that is my soapbox, my speech, and I'm popping off of it now. And I'm turning it over to Sandy. And then if you would like to add anything, though.
Okay. I want to talk a little bit about the Communications Committee and the work that's been done with that committee. Communication Committee is not a board-appointed committee. Is one of the, one of, I think it's the only committee that we have that has been working on policy that is not board-appointed. Board-appointed committee comes from me and whomever I randomly choose to chair it. And all of these people duck when I say that. But this committee was set up while our former director was here. And it was decided that the school would have an ASL policy. That committee was chosen by the former director. And it is a school-based committee. They brought a policy to the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees read over it. We got legal advice, looked at it, and it was passed in January twenty-twenty-five. So on when this, the staff became very upset about this, we looked at it again, and I gave it back to the Communication Committee. And the Communication Committee did not ignore the things that were brought up by the staff. But since this is a school-based committee and not a board-appointed committee, you can go to Dr. Todd and say, I want to be on that committee. I want my voice heard. I want to be in the meetings. I want to express my thoughts, my desires. Because she can put you right on the committee. She is now the director. And she can change that committee in any way. So I want you to know that things have been looked at, discussed, thought about, and after much discussion, the policy has been approved and is in effect now. Policies are not written and stoned. They can be changed. I do respect Dr. Tate's thoughts on changing so quickly. So my thought, and I'm going to ask the board in a minute what they think, but my thought is, let's try it for a year, see what happens. If everybody's going to ASL classes and making a genuine effort, we're good. We're learning, we're moving. Anybody else have, have thoughts on that or that?
I think that the most important thing is that, you know, our staff are involved in those ASL classes, that they're improving their sign, and we have that two-year limit. So it's not going to be how things were handled in the past. We want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that policy and that we have follow-through. So continuing, you know, that flow of adherence to the policy and those expectations. And then, of course, incorporating your feedback, just like Dr. Tate said, you know, but this is a school-based committee. I just want to make sure you guys are aware of that, so you can be involved in those committees. It's not the Board of Trustees' decisions, but we are helping with that, follow-through with the policies.
Anybody else? Dr. Todd, do you want something?
Dr. Todd, I just want to give a reminder to everyone that because this is a school-based committee, we do have the capability, and we have made adjustments to some of the procedures. And that was from decisions made in our committees. Specifically from our ASL instructors and that feedback. So I just want to make it clear that I support those changes. And I also understand the reason behind not leaving. And I also understand the reason behind not leaping towards making changes as soon as we receive feedback. It takes time, of course. But I do think the policy and the procedures have already had a positive impact on our school.
Other discussion anywhere? Okay, we will continue to hold that on old business for a while and look at more feedback. Is there anything that anybody else has in open session? If not, do, uh, hear a motion and do you have it written out for personnel?
Well, it would be a motion to go into closed session, uh, for a purpose of personnel. And I'll throw a attorney-client privilege, it comes under, under, uh, uh, one forty-three, three eighteen point eleven A three and eleven A six.
You're the only people that can remember that.
I'm just making it up, it sounds good.
He's not, I, that's correct.
Do I have a sub move? Okay, do I have a second on that sub move?
This is Jimmy, I second. And Tammy, I second as well.
Thank you all for being here today, we appreciate you very much, we are now going into closed session.
Just to be clear with that unanimous, everybody voted in one closed session?
Everybody who wanted to vote is going to closed session. Everybody did.
Me, yes.
Good. We're back on the list. Can we all see that speaking?
I can right now, but I'm also following the interpreters.
All of you here. Okay, can I have a question about socialization, the job of practice, or support? Did you have any connection? To the environment, about, about, in that position, particularly with the, with the, with the, with the society? And then, really, second, I, all right, I'm going to begin. And my society, seriously, if I know what you're saying. So I have this is Jimmy, that is, during one of the side, all right, the branch of main. Okay, any other something for you to say?
Good, uh, um, really, let the board know that I have made a, yes, you have ethics training. Same part within the beginning. Also, I have a mask. People to surprise, maybe people with anything. I have asked prisoners, uh, to actually be more creative and be able to control the experience. And, uh, I can, you know, most of that, it's in my, it's in my school. Being, you know, taught that, you know, just you're a god and, you know, you'll get back to us. If we can pay a damn if it's nice. Do it here. I want it, you know, to school. So that might be, please, your house, but things like, food, maybe, okay, as we're releasing the, you know, the, the.
All right, so if I have anything else?
Can I join? I'm sorry, you know, I can't find it. I've been on drive. Very late, you. Oh, no, I just thought of something for Tammy, the least, it's a little, it's a, it's a.
Okay, is our motion to adjourn? Seriously?
Back in, Tammy.
All right, thank you all. So I agree with Sandy, yes, please move.